Diane, maybe you could turn your volume off until we're ready for you. You can obviously be a part of that thing.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order this budget hearing, an annual meeting of the DeSoto Area School District, Monday, October 25th, 2021, in the middle of high school LMC. It is also virtually livestreamed on the district website, which is www.deSoto.k12.wi.us. We'll start with a few announcements. First, I'd like to introduce the board members. My name is Rick Pedretti, I'm the board president. Vice President Jess Boardman, if you're in my right. Right now, we have an open position for the clerk. Treasurer is Kirk Holliday, who is absent this evening. We have directors Brent Hutchison, okay, Jeff Long, Dara Spingler, Ryan Venner, Kevin Walliser, who will be here momentarily, and our parliamentarian this evening is Mr. Ron Von Rahn in the back of the room.
In the open position, or was that?
Yes, in the open position, is in the village of Genoa. Anyway, I'd like to add that each speaker addressing the chair should state his or her name and address, and the comments should be limited to three minutes per topic. Public comments may be provided in writing, they were, well, it could have been, to the district office by, or by email to Jackie Cruiser. Written comments need to be received by 3:30 PM on October 25th, and include the individual's name and address. Each comment must be limited to three minutes in duration and read aloud. All voting will be by voice vote unless a ballot is specifically requested. All persons wishing to be recognized will be heard prior to anyone being recognized a second time. At this time, then, we need to elect a meeting chairperson, and I will nominate Lindsey Grunning.
I'll second that.
Second by Jeff Long. Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations would close. All those in favor of Ms. Lindsey Grunning being the chairperson signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lindsey, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I would like everyone to call their attention to the minutes of October 26, 2020, of the DeSoto Area School District Budget Hearing and Annual Meeting. As you are looking through those minutes, if there is a motion to approve them, I would take that at this time.
So Jeff Long makes that motion to approve the minutes. Seconded by Sue, go ahead, seconded by Sue, please.
Thank you, Sue. So the motion was made by Jeff Long and seconded by Sue Flip to approve the minutes of the October 26, 2020, DeSoto Area School District Budget Hearing and Annual Meeting. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. This time, Mike Temps, CPA from Tosterson Trump, will present the 2020-21 Audit Report.
Good evening, everyone. If anybody wants to follow along, there are more copies of the audit report up here, so feel free to grab one if you like. Anybody else? All right, I will get started here. And we'll begin on page four. That's the independent auditor's report. So the audit process involves a team of us from our firm coming in, going through the school district's records, looking at rules and regulations and making sure that you're abiding by them. And we'll discuss those things as we go forward here. But the beginning of the report talks about what management's responsibility for the financial statements are. Then, at the bottom of page four, the auditor's responsibility. On page five, about the middle of the page, is our audit opinion. And that audit opinion is what's called an unmodified opinion, which is what anybody who has audited strives to receive. If you receive anything less than unmodified opinion, you would have some issues to deal with. But the district did receive an unmodified opinion. There's some other boilerplate language that follows this that I won't get into right now, but we'll move on to page 7.1. This is called the Management Discussion and Analysis section of the report. So there are some highlights of what went on in the district over the last year financially, some information about how the financial statements are put together on pages seven, two, and three. When you get to seven, four, some comparison reports to the prior year here for the statement of net position. And also on page seven, five, the operating results for the past fiscal year compared to the prior year. So again, I'm not going to get into all the detail here. We'll talk about some of the detail as I move forward. But be aware that this information is there, and read through it at your leisure, those that are interested. And there's a lot of information in that section. And we move on to page nine. So page nine is the statement of net position. For anybody who is involved in the business world, that might be equivalent to a balance sheet. We have, the district is broken down into two types of activities, well, really three, but two main ones here are the governmental activities and the business-type activities. The only business-type activity the school district runs is the food service program. Everything else is considered a governmental activity, and/or there are some fiduciary funds as well. The, so the governmental activities involves pretty much everything other than food service. You'll see at the bottom of the page, under Governmental Activities section, that the net position of the district is $7,553,000. Net position would be, in theory, if you sold all your assets, paid off your liabilities, that's what you'd be left over, that would be left over. Now, that's assuming some pretty unrealistic things, like you'd be able to sell the building for what it's on the books for and things of that nature. So it's more of a theoretical number than it is anything else. The next page is a statement of activities. And again, this is going to be district-wide, so everything is rolled into these front two financial statements. All of your programs, activities, except for food service, is in that first column on the previous page. And then, your activities here are all the governmental activities, until there's one line on there for the food service program. At the end of the day, in the governmental activities column, the district's net position increased $838,000. Last year, it ended at $6,714,000, now it's at $7,553,000. The food service program had an increase in net position of $39,000. And last year, it ended the year at about, at $36,000. So the sum of those two, you ended this year at $75,000 of net position in the food service program. Now, we'll get into the governmental funds next, on pages 11 and through about 15 here. I'm going to skip over the balance sheet here and on to page 13. This is going to be what transpired in the district over the last year. So you'll see your general fund, which is where most of your activities occur. That's going to be all the instruction, busing, district administration, business administration, all of that, all of that is encompassed in the general fund. So you'll see revenues for the year were about just under $7.8 million. Expenditures were about $7.7 million. And then, there were some sales of capital assets that generated about $15,000 of income. At the end here, your change in fund balance in the general fund was $114,000. And that brought you from $2,662,000 up to $2,776,000 at the end of the year. On the debt service funds, the revenues were $640,000. Expenses were just about $540,000, so you gained about $100,000 in the debt service fund. And then, the other governmental funds are broken down in the back. Together, there are several funds there, we'll talk about in a few minutes, but you overall gained $42,000 in fund balance over the past fiscal year in those other funds. Page 16 is the food service program, broken down here by itself. And again, you'll see, some of these numbers will be familiar. We've already talked about the net position at $75,000 towards the bottom of the page. So over the past fiscal year, on page 17, the food service program generated about $370,000 of revenue. Expenditures were about $330,000. So there's your change in that position of $39,000. Obviously, we've had a couple of strange years here, and in the food service program, most of the meals are free. I think the only revenues generated are primarily from adult meals. So all the student meals are being financed by the federal and state governments. I'm going to bring you to page 19. There was a change mandated by government accounting standards. We used to have a fund here for scholarships, which has been moved to Fund 21, which is now a gift fund that all these scholarships are accounted for in there now. So we moved the scholarship fund balance into Fund 21 at the beginning of last fiscal year, on July 1st of 2020. So that's why this page is blank. Pages 20 through 25 are all talking about accounting methods and how things are dealt with in the financial statements. If you would like some really light reading at night, maybe you'd want to go through that. Otherwise, probably not information anybody's really concerned about. We flip to page 27. There's a footnote here on cash and investments. So just informational, really, that there was about $2.4 million of cash in the district as of June 30, 2021. So, and there's a breakdown below that of where those dollars are located. A large chunk of that, or $1.9 million, was in the local government investment pool, which is a state-run investment for all types of municipalities, school districts, cities, townships, et cetera, that want to use it. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit here to page 31. So 31 is a little bit of a breakdown on the district's capital assets. So your land, buildings, equipment and furniture that you use throughout the district. At June 30 of 21, you have about $17,340,000 invested in equipment. On the food service side, about $148,000. So those assets under the government accounting standards get depreciated over their estimated useful lives, so you'll see some depreciation numbers in here as well. If we flip over to page 32, this is the detail of the district's debt that it had at June 30 of 21. So that involves primarily some trust fund, a couple of trust fund loans, and the general obligation bonds that the district is responsible for. There are some employee benefits listed here as well. Sick and incentive leave days, that days that were unused at June 30 of 21 that the employees have coming. And then, there's some information here on the Wisconsin retirement system. It gets a little complex, so I'm not going to get into that. We've talked about this in past meetings. But suffice it to say, that's part of your long-term debt, is your obligation to WRS. In this case, you're actually a little overpaid, so. Starting on page 34 is a long-winded footnote, talking about the employee retirement plans through Wisconsin retirement system. And then, the district has its own plan for health benefits that runs several more pages. And that takes you through about page 43. Then, as I mentioned earlier, there's a footnote here on page 45 that we had to move some dollars that were previously listed as scholarship dollars into a district-wide gift fund. So we had to change some numbers from last year's audit at the beginning of the year, and this explains how the numbers were moved from one fund to another. So that's really all that's telling you. I'm going to skip ahead again to page 50. Page 50 is a comparison of budget and actual numbers. It's on a fairly large, broad scale here. So we have, you know, the original budget that was adopted, and then, there were changes, a few changes throughout the year that are reflected in the budgeted final column. And then, the actuals show up in the third column. And then, the difference between the final budget and the actual is in the fourth column. So you can see, all the numbers are pretty darn close, other than a couple of minor ones that are off a little bit. When you're talking about being off $17,000 on an $8 million budget, it's really quite insignificant, so. Then I told you, we talked a little bit about some other funds, and those are listed on page 58 and 59. So because they're relatively small, we classify them as non-major governmental funds. You'll see Special Revenue Trust Fund, which again, is where the scholarships were moved to. It's a fund set up by DPI to account for dollars that are gifted to the district, and then, the district accounts for the money received and spent as far as that gifting goes in that special revenue fund. Then there are capital, there's a Capital Improvement Fund, which has $1,000 in it and is earning some interest. And then, your Community Service Fund, Fund 80 is where you run Surround Care and summer rec activities. So that's on Community Service Fund. So for each of those funds, on page 59, there's revenues and expenses. So you'll see here that the Special Revenue Fund had $298,000 of revenue and about $270 in expenses, so it increased by about $29,000. And the Community Service Fund had revenues of $33,000, expenditures of $20, so that increased up just under $13,000 for the year. Then I'm going to hit just a couple more highlights here. On page 61, the federal government provides money to schools through numerous programs that the federal government has that benefit education. And you're going to see a laundry list here on pages 61 and 62. At the end of the day, revenues received from the federal government to operate the school last year were $1.1 million. You'll see that on page 62, the third column over. So $1.1 million came in from the federal government to help operate the school. On page 63 is money that came from the state of Wisconsin. So that number is almost $4 million, $3.934, $3,934,000. And again, the state has some programs, the main one being your equalization aid, which I'm sure will be discussed here shortly. And then, your food service program, no, no, people aid adjustment, $394,000. So those are the two big programs that you get money in from the state. At the end of the report, we have a couple of letters here. So as part of the audit process, we review the district's internal controls. It's very important that the district has controls in place to make sure the money is safeguarded, the assets are safeguarded. So we do some testing and checking of internal controls as part of the audit process. And then, also do some compliance testing, compliance with laws and regulations. When anybody receives money either from the federal or state government, there are strings attached, there are rules to follow. So we're making sure that you're following those rules. And if there's problems, we'll point them out. On page 67 is the major program report. So once you receive certain dollar amounts, the governments consider them major. You, or they designate them as major, and then, we look at them in a little bit more detail. We did identify a problem in your transportation aid as part of the audit. That's listed on page 68. So you get aid based on how far the kids live from the school and how far you have to transport them. So it's important to categorize the kids and how far away they live from the schools that they're attending. And we found some issues in that reporting last year. That has been, since been corrected, so DPI does have the right numbers now. So there will be probably having us do some follow-up on this next year to make sure that there are no issues. But they weren't major issues, but they were issues that DPI found that had to be corrected, so. Other than that, we had no other issues with anything else that we looked at. The major program of, on the federal side, was your school nutrition monies that you get from the federal government for school lunch and breakfast. And everything was good there, so no issues to report on that. We talk about the finding here on the last page, on page 71, so you can read through that. And that's what we have to say about that. On the, then at the end of your report, there should be a loose couple of pages. It's just a communication between us as auditors and the board. We talk about who's got responsibility for what, again, as we talk about in the auditor's report. Just some general statements, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Everything was made available to us, everything was in good order. There were a few journal entries that were made to make a few corrections, but they were insignificant. No disagreements with management. We received a representation letter from the district, which is required as part of the audit, telling us that you have provided us with everything that we asked for, and that you have not held anything back. So we're good in that regard. The last item is consultations with other accountants. We occasionally will get a call from a district or other client we're working with during the year who has a question about how to record a certain transaction or has a question about how to comply with some of the federal rules or state rules. So if we get a call like that, we will give you our opinion. If you don't necessarily agree with us, you can certainly ask other accountants. Our rules, our accounting rules, just say that that other accountant needs to contact us, so we're both talking about the same issue, and we're on the same page as far as getting information back to the district. So that didn't happen, but it could happen. Just, we're just saying here that there were no issues last year that that was a problem, that we had a problem with. So I think that's pretty much the report. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Otherwise, I think the district's financially is in good shape right now.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate Danielle and the crew coming out here and working. And I would like to just express my compliments to our business personnel. Diane, who's our business manager, joining us virtually in a few minutes. And then, of course, Lisa Garvelia, who has worked together to ensure that we are in this good standing, along with all the administrators who manage their budgets, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome to stay, or you can to the end of the annual meeting. At this time, the district administrators will help me, assist me in presenting this next report here. I'd like to just start out by summarizing the 2021 school year by saying that we are committed, as a district, as a staff, school board, and administrative team, to our student resiliency, learning, and well-being, especially in the year of COVID that followed school closure in 2020 of the spring, and then, what we did over the summer. We have a student-centered approach, which is a foundation for all of our decision-making and planning. We worked with the Collaborative Education Committee in order to reopen the school year of teachers, administrators, and staff. We engaged stakeholders, parents, and students who need surveys, food, technology, and support, hotspots, or Chromebooks, to find out what that they would need in order to make the 2021 school year work for them. We worked with school board and the school board committees, and those committees were finance and personnel, building grounds and transportation, policy, curriculum, and technology. Every single one of those committees played a role in how we were going to be able to open the school year last year. And we did research, consult, and developed and reviewed our plans with the Vernon County Health Department, Sheriff's Department, Vernon County Emergency Management, Dr. Pryor, our medical advisor, Opal Hostert, our district nurse, and our insurance company risk advisor. This was to get started for us. Student resiliency, learning, and well-being began with three student learning models that you're familiar with. Our parents had the option of having their students learn at home through remote learning at the time their classes were in session. They could have chosen in-school traditional learning, which the majority of our families did, or they had the option of our DeSoto Virtual Charter School. Teachers spent the summer preparing for the 2021 school year through training on Google Classroom, becoming familiar with new ways to use projectors, webcams, and work in the Google Classroom with sites, meetings, slides, sheets, docs, all in order to be able to do that synchronous learning, which meant our teachers were teaching at the students in the classroom at the same time kids were learning at home. Technology, we'll go over a little bit of that when Mr. Grunning's turn comes. Our classroom and school design, we spent hours taking a look at how we could have the appropriate space in our classrooms where our chairs would be, created plexiglass dividers to when we couldn't have enough separation due to our small classroom sizes. Mitigation and prevention strategies, we use CDC EPA-approved cleaners and disinfectants. We trained our custodial maintenance staff, our teaching staff. We did masking last year, hallway spaces, grade-level classes, and cohorts together. Communication and information was done through surveys, our school messenger system, which we initiated with emails and texts, virtual broadcasts of school board meetings as well as town hall meetings, mailings, and a mailed registration process. And our COVID nineteen in school updates page was started in February of twenty twenty, and it continues through today. Anyone who wants to look back at the information was provided, just needs to scroll down. It's all there since February of twenty twenty. This is what some of the things look like that we had set up in our building last year and still remain to this day. Our entrances have masks available and hand sanitizer available for people who come into our buildings. You see the hand sanitizer equipment in our main areas, going into the cafeteria, into the gyms, as well as it's also available in every classroom. The hand washing is still the preferred method with soap and water for twenty seconds. All of our water fountains had the red cap placed on them to stop people from being able to drink directly out of the fountain. You are able to use cups or bottle fillers to get water. And then our teachers participated in that cleaning of high-touch surfaces throughout the day. They had two charge buckets, one with clean cloth in them, the blue bucket on the left, and then after they had wiped down desktops, chairs, and high-touch surfaces, those are deposited in the other bucket, and the custodians change those out, provide fresh every single day. That still continues this year as well. Here is some of the plexiglass dividers that we built that still are in place today for our students. Here's classroom spacing allowing three feet separation. And here's two examples of the plexiglass dividers we built for our quad seating. You can see that those dividers extend beyond the chairs so that when you're sitting side by side someone and you look to your right or to your left, you're looking through plexiglass between the students there. And then cafeteria last year as well as this year looks like this, six-foot tables are used, so students are six foot apart from one another. The other things that were very important to us as we put together our plan for last year, and we do every year, is that social emotional learning and well-being. We incorporated that social emotional curriculum into classes, small groups, and individual counseling. We maintained our extracurricular activities and sports throughout the year, and we had, of course, prom and then in-person graduation at the end of the year, as well as the eighth grade promotion. And at the elementary schools, the kindergarten graduation and their promotion ceremonies. Support services, we connected our families and students throughout the years, we do every year, to the community services that are available through Vernon County, whether it's human services, social services, even our sheriff's department, other counseling areas, and other resources available to support our students and their families. We are so appreciative of our Athletic Booster Club, the PTOs, our businesses, and our benefactors who supported us throughout that year, last year, and continue to do that in support of classroom needs, what teachers are looking for for extra materials and projects, field trips, supplies, the food snacks that are available, and even in support of our food pantry. Compensatory services is something that falls under Mrs. Moline's heading, but is services that we give to our students who are special education students with IMPs or five oh four plans to ensure that they, those plans are being met accordingly. And we had two weeks where the middle school, high school was closed. We were able to bring in some of those students, but others had to receive at-home services, and those were provided during the year, virtually, over the phone, in person, and then last summer in person as well. Summer school offerings, last year before the school year started, our summer school really was our prelude. It was an opportunity for us to bring back students into our schools and make sure that the processes that we were going to have in place for the school year were working effectively and kept everyone as safeguarded as possible. And those summer school classes also involve enrichment and core classes. We are very committed to our vision and mission of our school district, which is really partnering with families and the community in order to provide exemplary activities for our students and to ensure that they have opportunities of big schools right here in our small school with a big heart. Our mission, vision, belief is supported by strategic goals, and they fall in those particular categories that you see there. Student achievement is measured, obviously, by state testing and our district testing of pals and stars. Our state report cards take a look at achievement, meaning what knowledge and skills have our students learned over the years, the growth, what is growth, the change from year to year in how students are learning, the targeted growth of our struggling learners, how are we meeting the needs of those who aren't learning at the pace that we would like to see them learning, and are we on track for graduation? And we take a look at attendance, obviously, and measure key grade-level measurements in reading and math between elementary and the high school years. Our human resources, our other goal is to ensure that we attract, orient, provide professional development, and retain quality staff, whether it's teachers, support staff, or anyone else who's working in our district as aides, coaches, or advisors. Our community partnership is something that we will always work to develop. Again, the support of the Booster Club, PTOs, and the benefactors and businesses is essential to being able to offer all the program opportunities and field trips and support our students' needs. Under fiscal responsibility, I appreciate Mike Temps' review of the audit and how we manage our money in our school district. As everyone knows, due to COVID, we received some additional funding. Those were the governor's emergency education relief of about seventy-three thousand dollars, which was spent. And then the S R funding, our initial S R one funding of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, a little bit over that, that we have the opportunity to spend to meet our educational goals and needs and the safety and wellness of our students from twenty twenty all the way to twenty twenty-three. Safety and wellness is our last category, but our number one priority is the safety and well-being of our students. Without that, education just cannot take place. And we do that in a variety of ways. The safety part is in our controlled entrances, cameras, cameras on school buses and in school buildings, night locks that hold a thousand pounds of pressure on classroom doors that can be used if there's an intruder. We're very appreciative to our Vernon County Sheriff's Department for their patrols of all of our buildings at night. They will call us if there's any concerns or issues. A window slightly open, they'll make sure that we get it closed at two in the morning. They also provide Alice intruder training through the Vernon County Emergency Management, the Sheriff's Department in conjunction with emergency personnel from multiple states and multiple counties. Of course, our fire and tornado drills as well. The hand sanitizer water fountains and things that you saw, along with posting of signage to remind students to keep a distance, as well as follow safety protocols, which including masking last year, were prominent throughout our buildings. We also wrote grants, and we received a Grant for Hope squad that will be implemented this year, with staff trained so that they can teach students how to mentor, and that addresses both mental health as well as suicide prevention. And our staff every year, including last year, received training in adverse childhood experiences, trauma-sensitive schools, and mental health first aid. Turn this over to Betsy for the food service recap.
As I said, USDA did offer free breakfast and lunch for students last year. We were grateful of that. Meal participation did increase at all three schools and at St. Matt's. It did decrease a bit at breakfast due to USDA not allowing a second breakfast for those students. And then we did receive a two thousand dollar Gen Youth grant, and we haven't spent out that money yet. The money came in during the summertime, late sometime in the summer. And we are going to purchase some coolers, utility curricels, and other things to that.
Anything else, Betsy?
No, sir.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Grunning?
I think you covered most of it. Couple of highlights here, if you want to look at the screen, is we're pretty proud of the webcams that we chose. The audio quality was quite satisfactory for the remote students. The staff handled the Google domain and all of the remote educating that went on quite well. We also feel it was a successful implementation of school messenger to notify parents in the district, and we'll continue to provide that in the future here.
And the Facebook and YouTube accounts, people can go to our district YouTube, which is noted at the bottom, or Facebook at the bottom of our website homepage, and you can see this old school board meetings as well as our virtual town hall meetings that we had last year and this year. Thank you, Mr. Grunning. And always a big thumbs up for your state technicians who work in all of our buildings, making sure that everything is working well. Summer school, Mr. Olson?
Yeah. July and August twenty twenty, we opened up summer school, and we were kind of guinea pigs for all of our safety protocols and mitigation strategies. And overall, everything went well. On that end, we had two-week jumpstart program for our elementary students. Swimming was not offered, unfortunately, due to COVID. Our incoming sixth graders weren't able to attend Y Losings. We offered a three-day outdoor, kind of a camp for them down here, where they did outdoor activities, cooperative games, and were able to come in the building and take a tour of the building. Our fitness center remained open five days a week, and music and choir classes were offered for our students.
So this precluded the year, but our year is a fiscal year from July one to June thirtieth. So Mr. Olson will take us into the summer months a few months ago.
Sure. We offered a three-week enrichment and core academics for elementary students. Perry was able to go swimming at Lansing for three weeks. We initially had it set up with Roca, but their pool was not open. So we thank Lansing for opening their pool to us. Fitness Center was open, again, five days a week. Our middle school and high schoolers painted the mural, or started to paint the mural across the street here. There was a lot of preparation done by our maintenance department just to get to the point of priming and painting. And then, of course, many hours went into stenciling by a couple of teachers, or art teachers in the district, and then the students and the teachers carried it out. And then we also offered some instrumental and choir lessons throughout the summer.
Maintenance and custodial, Guy Fordman?
Some of the things we did district-wide, COVID nineteen, cleaning, disinfecting, the training and inflammation mitigation. We went through and trained everybody with COVID because it was a new thing that came around, got everything trained for, so we're all doing the right thing, trying to keep everybody safe and healthy. DeSoto High School, middle school, we installed three new roof sections, three of our biggest trouble areas, seem to be working well. Kitchen equipment, we put in a dishwasher, we put in a water softener as well in the district here. Lab four, we changed that into a special ed classroom, so we had to kind of remodel that because it was set up for distant learning from years ago. Misalane's plumbing repairs, and we also installed a magnetic filter for the boiler system here for our boiler water improvement plan. District-wide, we completed our DOJ safety grant, focused on safety, night locks, we put on doors, shades that we have for the classrooms in case there is somebody in the building that can't see through the classrooms and that. We also put fire extinguishers in there for Ed's security. Installed a water heater, Honda Man water heater in the bus garage. Also completed our monthly water testing for the state. HVAC refrigeration equipment repairs, mandatory staff training, we've been staying pretty up on that, and also all of our annual inspections such as fire systems, elevators, boilers, gas, and leachers. Elementary schools, we did some roof flashing repairs, some LED lighting upgrades, and also insulation of the plexiglass dividers. And we also installed ionizing units in all three schools through our sick areas, help kill pathogens in the air and everything, keep everybody safe.
Mr. Burman, Mrs. Moline, speak about the pupil services highlighted over there.
As students return from being at home on the school closure and returning back to either virtual, remote learning or in-person, depending on parental choice, we met the students where they were and provide services that started with the classroom instruction, assessing where they were at, and providing support through Title One specialists in the areas of reading and math. We did team teaching, and then in addition, we serviced students that qualified for special education services for more intensive interventions. We serviced around a hundred students, and that varied from, in addition, not only at each of our two elementary buildings, the middle and high school, Virtual Charter School, as well as the two private schools in the district. In addition, we serviced students in a variety of needs as well that are outlined from the Department of Public Instruction and different criteria area. Students who have learning disabilities, students who are experiencing emotional behavioral disabilities, autism, and the list goes on. In addition, our special education teachers and paras, substitutes, school psychologists, sign language interpreter, we had a lot of staff helping support our students, a clinical social worker, providing those mental health supports. And as we move through the year, we provide coursework accommodations, transportation, job skills training as students had sometimes experienced that, especially with the pandemic. In addition, our school worked with the Department of Public Instruction and the Wisconsin indicators for special education. That's, they have seventeen indicators that work towards improving outcomes of children with disabilities in Wisconsin. Indicator fourteen is post-school outcomes, and we are trained, we have some staff trained in grant interviews. So we interviewed our students who qualified for special education and were graduates of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year to discuss their post outcome careers. In addition, the last school year, we implemented educator effectiveness, teacher and principal evaluations. We used the Google Drive Classroom platform, which was our first year of documenting those types of services and using that as a platform through the Google Drive Classroom, similar to what our students had experienced and teachers. So we implemented that using the Daganis framework, which we've used for many years. As the district assessments continued on, being re-implemented at a state level, we took a variety that included, you know, for our third through eleventh graders experiencing the forward, or access for English language learners, dynamic learning maps for a population that doesn't take the forward. And then locally, we continued with our star reading and math and pals assessments at those younger levels. We used all of that data from pre-COVID preschool closure into this regular school year opening throughout the school year to guide our staffing, professional development, any types of interventions, purchases of items, and differentiation.
Mr. Olson, transportation?
Sure. So we continue to operate nine daily bus routes, three daily shuttles. All of the buses that Southwest Bus provides have cameras on them. There were three driver trainings throughout the year. Our contract with Southwest Bus runs through the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and so far, we've had a very positive partnership with them.
When we take a look again in your annual report, you will see highlights in each one of these areas, because even though it was a year of COVID protocols and prevention and mitigation efforts, it was also a year of great learning and great opportunities where our students grew, were successful, and achieved. were successful and achieved. And in your annual report, our highlights from all of these areas, academics, talented gifted, the field trips that we reinstituted and had throughout the year, our school and community partnerships, which is everything from our Veterans Day Assembly to our blood drives, the work of the PTO, our art, the mural is one example, but our students continue to exhibit art. Athletic achievements, FFA, state awards, as well as national honors. And new staff, we welcomed Carissa Rudos, who was our middle school, high school art teacher, Meg Mullen to our English department, and Kyle Schaefer to our middle school, high school music department. And that is the year in summary. This is the time where everybody claps. Okay, whistles are allowed. Well, Diane back up. The next part of this presentation is normally given by the treasurer. Mr. Holliday is not here, so Diane very nicely indicated that she would provide that summary on page 18 of your school district annual report. Diane, do you have that with you?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So your turn.
It's my turn, okay? Just to talk a second about the handout that you have, I'm going to start with page 18. But page 18 to 28 is all the financial information that we've provided you. It gives you a kind of snapshots as to the school district financial activity. There's two really important pieces in that handout and some other is informational. But the two important pieces are the budget adoption that are in pages 22 to 25. You have the budget there in summary for all across the funds. And then the motion for the tax levy, which is on page 27. So those two pieces are the important pieces in there. In a minute or so, Lisa will be doing a presentation which will walk you through some of the highlights. It's not our intention to read through every page of all those numbers. Some of that's just provided for you. If you have questions throughout the rest of this financial discussion and of course, leading up to the tax levy, feel free to either raise your hand or get our attention some way, or just wait until we transition from one segment to the next. And we want to be able to answer your questions. The other point I want to make about any of this financial information, also as far as the audit report, you saw a lot of pages with numbers that are summaries or some totals. But if there's any question or anyone wants a full detail of the line-by-line items of our budget for the new year or for our spending in the past, they can just make a request for that information to Lindsay and we'll make sure that you get the backup reports. But as in the audit, our financial information is generally less detailed than 500 pages of line items. But we do have the backup for that if it's needed. Any questions on that? I'll go on to the treasurer's report. So the treasurer's report in your handout is really just like gathering a few pieces of information from all the information that you see. The first section shows some numbers about the general fund revenue. And we thought it was important to know that as you're comparing revenue, not only last year to this year, so the fiscal year that just ended in June and looking at the fiscal year we're budgeting for, there's a difference between one is an actual number and the other number is our best assumption of where we'll be at the end of the year. The difference in the revenue from last year to this year is 432,000. But the board members of the finance committee have heard me say this at past meetings. The year-to-year comparisons of 18, 19, 19, 20, 2021, 21, 22, we're always going to have to look back and remember that this period of time is difficult to compare year over year. So when you see changes in the year-to-year comparison, we have to take into account the fact that the activity was different year to year. And of course, we would expect the budget to not be a steady trending predictable line as we take advantage of the federal dollars that are granted to us, whether it's S or Gears, CARES dollars, or whether it's grants that come in the form of safety grants and other revenue that the district seeks out to support the school operations, we need to take that into account. It doesn't always mean that the money's going up and down because we have erratic budgeting. We have budgeting that follows the revenue that's available to us. If you look at the comparison of the prior fiscal year to this fiscal year, the $432,000, we need to make and count that, that S or Gears money. And the difference between S or money in the year one last year and year two this year is 396,000. So of the $432,000 difference in our revenue budget to actual last year, almost all of that, almost $400,000 has to do with the change in S or Gears. So as we look at budgeting, you're going to find similar situations where that would apply. If it applies to our revenue, it also applies to our expenses. Our general fund expenditures are anticipated to be 7.9 million and the change is 546,000. Again, back it up and say the 396,000 is related to how we intend to spend our S or dollars. The true difference year over year of the budget of other items is 149,000. When we look at the Fund 10 tax levy, Lisa will walk through some of the Fund 10 tax levy components, like the revenue limit in a few minutes. The Fund 10 portion change is 180,000. She'll also explain how the tax levy is not just Fund 10, it's other funds in combination. And we'll walk you through that tax levy computation. Our Fund 38 and 39, our debt levy is 537,000, followed by our Fund 80 levy, which will be 25,000 this year. So total all funds levy last year was 3.6 million and total all funds proposed levy for a motion tonight is 3,678, a difference of approximately 77,000. So this, Lisa will go into a PowerPoint presentation that will walk you through Fund 10 and some of the other funds and how we get to this total tax levy. So Lisa, are you ready to go?
I'm going to minimize Diane here while we pull up her PowerPoint.
Yes, I can, I can get off the screen. And I'll be listening in to answer anything that might be technical or something that had to do with a portion of the budget that I did versus Lisa.
All right, so now we'll look at the DeSoto Area Schools 2021-2022 budget. So our first slide shows the previously approved budget and where we are today. Due to timing of the publication data, information received on October 15th, which includes state equalization aid, open enrollment, and voucher adjustments could not be included in the original budget summary. The updates are included in this slide and in the following presentations. And here's just some miscellaneous budget notes. Fund 10 revenue and expenditures are affected by both Gears and CARES Act funding in both fiscal years 2020-2021 and 2021-2022 projections. Grant revenue and COVID-19 expenses will create variances in our budget estimates when compared to previous years. The transfer to Fund 50, which you've heard referenced a few times already, which supports food service operations, is eliminated for 2020-2021 due to the USDA payments for meals served during spring and summer. It is anticipated that this transfer will not be needed for 2021-2022 due to the district's participation in the USDA food service program. All right, now we'll get into the fund stuff. What is the revenue limit and how is it calculated? A district's revenue limit is the maximum amount of revenue that may be raised through state general aid and property tax for the general non-referendum debt and capital expansion funds, also referred to as Funds 10, 38, and 41 respectively. It is driven by resident FTE times the district's maximum revenue per member. This graph illustrates how the revenue limit is calculated. Resident FTE, which is the headcount per pupil or pupil membership, times dollars per pupil plus one-time non-recurring exemptions plus ongoing recurring exemptions is how the revenue limit is calculated. You'll see more examples of what makes up the calculations in the slides that follow. So here's a little revenue limit calculation 101. So the revenue limit is calculated every year. The formula is adjusted for the September enrollment count. It's a three-year average and the allowable per pupil increase yielding a new revenue limit total. In 2021-2022, the revenue limit is increased by exemptions for hold harmless, declining enrollment, and private school vouchers. The revenue limit is then adjusted for recurring and non-recurring exemptions. In 2021-2022, the district's hold harmless and declining enrollment exemption increased as did the amount for private school vouchers, resulting in the revenue limit increase of $85,379. The expected decline in revenue limit authority was offset by an increase in the voucher program and other exemptions. Why is the revenue limit important? The revenue limit calculates how much the district can raise through state general aid and the local tax levy. The revenue limit less state general aid, which you'll see on the top line there, starting with the revenue limit with all exemptions of $5,985,379. So that less the state aid, which is $2,763,777, sorry, too many numbers. The high poverty aid of $28,269, and then computer aid and personal property aid of $7,017 is how we come up with our allowable revenue tax levy amount of $3,186,316. Now I will walk through the various funds in summary format and you have a more detailed copy in your booklet of the funds. We'll start with the general fund. Some of the revenue sources for the general fund, 200, source 200 being taxes, 300 and 400 is other district revenue like open enrollment. 500 is intermediate sources that, one example of that is a Carl's Perkins grant. The 600, special product projects, that would be like educator effectiveness, which was mentioned, or school safety grants. And then the other miscellaneous financing. The expenses, you can see that our biggest area of expenses is in the 100 sources, which is instruction. The 200 sources are benefits or fringe, which goes along with the high cost of instruction. And then the 400s is going to be supplies and other miscellaneous objects. So that's general fund. Now we'll go to Fund 21. And as you'll note, the first year, the balance isn't as high because in prior years, it did not include, like we had mentioned, the student activity fund or scholarship funds. So that's all rolled into Fund 21 now. And same thing, the 100s is the actual student activity accounts for that fund. And then next we have Fund 27, which is special ed. A lot of the revenue for this is grant-based, so we don't receive the money in for those grants until the money is actually claimed. So we don't claim, make the claims obviously until we spend the money. So that's how the revenue compares. And then again, 100s for instruction is one of the highest costs and then the benefits as well. So next we have Fund 50, which you can see there was a beginning fund balance thanks to the USDA program, which has been mentioned quite a few times. And then we have Fund 38 and 39, which is our debt service. Here's debt service. As you can see, we levy funds to cover the expenditures from our general obligations. Taxes are levied for the calendar year payment following the levy and expenditures are budgeted for the fiscal year payments as required by the debt schedule. And here's just a little continuation of the debt service. At year end, the district had $4,795,791 in general obligation debt. The district has borrowing capacity as shown below, which can only be authorized by voter referendum. The district has the authority to borrow up to $1 million without a referendum. The 2021 equalization valuation of the district as certified by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue is $452,474,726. Below is the legal debt limit margin of indebtedness in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. All right, and then the final fund that we have is Fund 80. Fund 80 is used for activities such as adult education, community, recreation programs, and other programs that have the primary function of serving the community. Some examples of how Fund 80 is utilized, which were previously mentioned, is surround care program at Stoddard, Beyond the Bell at Prairie View, which just started up again. And a couple of years ago, we helped pay for the splash pad in Stoddard, which I guess is a great success. All right, now onto the really fun stuff, onto tax levy calculations. And there it is. So what this graph is showing us is how our tax levy amount is figured. It is a combination of these four funds. From the left, you see Fund 39, which is one of our debt funds. That is the fund that I mentioned, you do need to have a referendum passed to borrow. Fund 10 is the revenue limit tax levy. The top is, the top is Fund 10 and Fund 38, which does not require referendum, as I mentioned. And then it also includes Fund 80. So that is where we come up with our $3,678,161 for the tax levy. And here's how we calculate the mill rate. How do we get to the mill rate? It's the total school levy divided by the equalized property value times 1,000 is the mill rate. So we have our $3,678,161, which is our school tax levy that we've been referring to. Our equalized property value came in at $452,474,726. Divided by 1,000 is where we come up with the $8.13. And what this means is, what this is telling us is our property value went up. So therefore, our mill rate is going down. There's more areas to spread those costs out to with the property value going up. Any questions on that? All right, so here is just a little history on the differences that we've had in the last five years for the school tax levies. And then this is just a representation of the mill rate and how it's changed. As you can see, we are quite similar to 2019, but we have a higher property value of $452,474,452,474,726 compared to in 2019. You can see that the property value was $400,659,806. So that's where you can see the difference in the two years and where the mill rate ended up with it being lower this year because the property value was higher. And then this just shows the, a bigger picture of the percentage in the mill rates over the past few years. All right, and then this next slide just shows how it's spread out amongst the different townships, municipalities, villages, and townships within the school district. And that's in your annual report booklet as well, I believe. And that's in your annual report booklet as well, I believe. And finally, this is just a little tax levy timeline that we have to follow here in the district. The levy must be approved by November 1st. We need to have it reported to the Department of Instruction by November 5th. And then we have to have signed copies to the municipalities by November 10. And any questions?
Anything?
On anything?
I have one question if you could touch on. I don't know which one you'd like to, but that is the, I guess we don't have a page number. But when we, where we talked about the increase in the voucher, is that, is that what we are expecting that we will truly pay out the vouchers this next year?
Diane, do you want to touch on this one?
Yes. That is on Slide 6, Lisa.
Yep.
If you might go back to that. Yes, the hundred and two thousand four seventy-nine is certified on our DPI revenue limit calculation. So this is the dollar amount that we're able to increase our revenue limit, and it is equal to the dollar amount that they will reduce from our state aid. So, so the vouchers are granted as a revenue limit increase, and then we have a corresponding expense on our budget for the, at the time, at the end of the year, when the state has their final aid payment to us, they reduce our aid by the vouchers. We get to increase, but we also have to add an expense. It's similar to open enrollment changes. The open enrollment is listed as a revenue for students coming in. It's an expense for students going out, and at year end, on June 30th, they give us the revenue. They charge us for the expense, reduce our aid to net out to what the state will actually aid us in the equalization aid. So yes, there is a change in the voucher program. You can see the three-year change from thirty-three thousand to sixty-seven thousand to a hundred and two.
So that's what we're paying for students to leave our perfectly good school district to go on to private schools?
It would be parental choice to attend a private school, and then those families have to be eligible with an income eligibility and have a school that's approved and entered into the voucher program. So we don't get information about the students, whether they're K-8 students or whether they're 912 students. We are given a line item on the revenue limit worksheet from DPI that, that provides that number for us. But yes, that's dollars that go to the private schools, and it funnels into our district through the form of the tax levy and goes back out of our district in the form of a reduction to our aid.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that Lisa talked about grant-based special ed Fund 27 and indicated that we don't get money reimbursed to our district until we've spent it, but it also includes a very comprehensive budgeting and budgeting approval process. We can't just blankly spend money on things that we might think are needed or valuable or important to have without doing that work. That includes the work for like ESER funds or the GIRS funding. All of that requires a budget approving process at the DPI level, and we get authorization then to submit claims to get the funding reimbursed to the district. The other thing I wanted to point out is in the board packets, there is a list of the Fund 80 activities over the years. Lisa mentioned surround care and the water pad in Stoddard, but the Little League, youth sports, the fishing tournaments, PTO gardens, public library, youth football, baseball, things like that are, are just many of the items that have been supported in the district communities over the years through that Fund 80. Just wanted to mention that.
And I would just like to provide one clarification on Slide 8, Lisa.
Yes.
Can you go back to, would you go back to Slide 8 just for clarification of where we have the Fund 10? Lisa mentioned the different sources of revenue. The sources of revenue are on a three-digit code, the 100, 200, 300, but on the expenses, I want to mention that that 100,000 function code is all the direct instruction. So the three million three thirty-two fifty-five is the salaries, fringe, supplies, materials that go direct instruction, that's cost for a teacher in front of a student. And then the support services is transportation, student services, administration, facilities, utilities, and everything that's not face-to-face with the kid, but a student, but provide, is provided by the district all around, and that's the 3.3 million. And the 400,000 function is partially, most of it is our Fund 27 transfer. So she mentioned 100s and 200 salaries and fringes, but I didn't want you to be confused. There is salary and fringe within the instruction, and salary and fringe within the non-instruction and supplies and materials, but I heard her say 100 be salary and 200 fringe. I didn't want you to come away with the impression that that is what these two numbers represented, or our fringes would be equal to our salaries, and that's incorrect. So the direct instruction, face-to-face with kids, support services, all the other things are not face-to-face with students, but provided by the district. And the 400 is the other program transaction. So that's all I wanted to add. We're ready for the next section, then. Any questions on the handout or anything else? Okay, then we're set.
There's no questions, I would entertain a motion from someone in the community or district resident to pass a tax levy of three million six hundred and seventy-eight dollars one hundred and sixty-one dollars to be approved for the 2021-22 school year. The breakdown of the levy is as follows. The general fund, three million one hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The referendum debt service of four hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. The non-referendum debt service of sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. And the community service fund as discussed for twenty-five thousand dollars. Would someone care to make that motion? I'm hoping you said it as I said it. Thank you. Sue Flick made the motion as their second please. Teresa Christensen. The motion was made by Sue Flick and seconded by Teresa Christensen that a tax levy of three million six hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars be approved for 2021-2022 school year. The breakdown of the levy is as follows. The general fund is three million one hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Referendum debt service of four hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Non-referendum debt service of sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. And the community service fund of twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Next, I would entertain Resolution B for a motion that authorizes the school board to secure temporary loans for current operating expenses according to statutory requirements. Someone care to make that motion?
Jess Boardman, General Township, I need that motion, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Rick Perdery, Weetland Township.
Motion was made by Jess Boardman and seconded by Rick Perdery that the school board be authorized to secure temporary loans for current operating expenses according to statutory requirements. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to establish salaries for the school board members as follows. Directors at one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. That would include the president, vice, oh, excuse me, directors are one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The president, vice president, treasurer at one thousand nine hundred dollars. The clerk at two thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Twenty-five dollars per committee meeting pay. Out-of-district meeting pay at one hundred dollars per day for full day, and fifty dollars for half-day meetings, and mileage at the IRS rate. Is there someone who would give a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second, please? Motion was made by Kevin Walliser and seconded by Sue Flick to establish salaries for school board members as follow. The directors will save one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The president, vice president, treasurer, one thousand nine hundred dollars. The clerk, two thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Twenty-five dollars committee meeting pay. Out-of-district meeting pay at one hundred dollars per day for full day, and fifty dollars for half-day meetings. Mileage at the IRS rate. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. I look for a motion to authorize reimbursement to board members for actual expenses and necessary expenses incurred when traveling in performance of duties. Is there someone who would make that motion?
I'll move.
Ron Van Glan, so moves. Is there a second?
Karen Mullane, Township of Virgin.
Motion was made by Ron Van Glan and seconded by Karen Mullane to authorize reimbursement to board members for actual expenses and necessary expenses incurred when traveling in performance of duties. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Motion to authorize the school board to expend money to initiate or defend legal action involving the school district. Is there a motion?
Jess Boardman, General Township, I need that motion.
Is there a second?
Jeff Long, Village of Stoddard.
Motion was made by Jess Boardman and seconded by Jeff Long to authorize the school board to expend money to initiate or defend legal action involving the school district. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need someone to make a motion that the school board be authorized to set the date of the 2020 annual school district meeting between May 15th and October 31st. Who did that?
He said, he clarified the date. Of 2022.
We set the date, sorry, of, of, you know, authorized to be set the date of the 2022 annual school board meeting date. Thank you. Is there someone who wishes to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Teresa?
No, seconded, Sue.
Sue, thank you. Motion was made by Teresa Christensen and seconded by Sue Flick that the school board be authorized to set the date of the 2022 annual school district meeting between May 15th and October 31st. Is there any discussion? Discussion, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side? For nay? Motion passes. And finally, is the school board authorized, motion to authorize the school board to provide accident insurance covering all students in the district, and that the cost and expenditures for said insurance is hereby authorized? May I have a motion, please?
I'll move. Kevin Walliser, County District.
Second, please.
I'll second that motion. Brad Hutchinson, Berryville.
Motion was made by Kevin Walliser and seconded by Brad Hutchinson that the school board be authorized to provide accident insurance covering all students in the district, and that the cost and expenditures for said insurance is hereby authorized. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Thank you. Are there any other subjects to be discussed at this time? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned.
I'll make that motion. Jeff Long, Stoddard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Teresa Christensen. Motion was made by Jeff Long and seconded by Teresa Christensen that the meeting be adjourned. I don't think there'll be much discussion on this, but I'll ask the question. Any discussion?
Three times.
Three times. Well, you know, our parliamentarian, Ron Van Glan, told me it was a three times, so any discussion or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. The meeting adjourned at?
Eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine PM. Thank you. We will take a five-minute break while we transition into our regular school board meeting, which will start in approximately five minutes. We will take a five-minute break while we transition into our regular school board meeting, which will start in approximately five minutes.
Anyway, our next item of business is to approve the receipts and expenditures. You have in your packet. And as always, you can call in advance with questions on those. Anybody have any questions?
None other than the eight you gave me.
Okay. Itemizing. Anyway, if there are no questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the receipts and expenditures as presented.
I so move.
Motion by Kevin. Seconded by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Then our next item of the approval of the minutes dated nine twenty twenty-one and nine twenty-nine twenty-one. Do you want to talk for a second?
I know that I don't think she had time to change the ones they wanted to reflect.
So in a special meeting on September twenty-nine, our last motion was had to do with the termination of an employee. And I just wanted to make it, since it was a unanimously supported motion, I think we want to add that it was unanimously supported because there were five people here and we had, it can't be a three to two or a four to one on that action. So we wanted to reflect what it was, so.
The forum was five and so it was unanimous.
So it'll be unanimous vote on that. So we're going to change that. And then was there one other thing that I could see?
In this.
Okay, nope. We answered the question. We're good on that. So if there are, are there any other questions on those? If not, we ask for a motion to approve those minutes with slight adjustment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jess Boardman. Seconded by Brett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Our next item is the resignation, hiring, transfer, and approval of volunteers. So we have some additional ones.
We have them in the packet.
Right.
Trying to make sure I have them all here. And we do have some resignations. Grant Snowslinger, assistant wrestling coach, is no longer able due to his work to continue in that past capacity. We certainly appreciate his time working with both the middle school and high school wrestling program. Tad Boardman, the head baseball coach. We also recognize his commitment to the program over the years and thank him. And Guy Boardman, who worked with our softball program as the assistant softball coach, has also thanked the district for the opportunity to coach, coach with other employees in the district and is resigning from his position as well. We are looking at hiring Darren Trussoni as the assistant middle school basketball coach for the boys' program upcoming this season. And then Emily Cole assisted us with the volleyball position as well, middle school volleyball coach. We'd like to thank her for her time in doing that and also approve her in that capacity. Aubrey Adet for the position of high school wrestling coach. He's been involved in the youth program as well, so we would like to approve him for hiring.
Any questions, anyone?
We will be posting the positions that were resigned for both internal and public opportunities to apply.
I'd ask for a motion then to approve the resignations and hirings as presented. Motion by Jeff Long. Seconded by...
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next item.
Resignations.
Okay, our next item is donations and thankfully, we have a couple.
Yes, we have a monetary donation from Harvard Fight, giving back for tools for our tech ed classes. Lancing Legends Car Club for needed items for the Stoddard fishing trip. And John Lambert for the cross-country team. Harvard Fight donated $200 gift card. And Lansing, L- L- Lancing Legends, $500. And John Lambert's donation was also for $500.
John Lambert was a friend and teammate of our head cross-country coach from Platteville. So that was really nice. He just come Platteville and donated it to our team. So thank you all, all donors. So with that, we would need a motion to accept donations as presented. We have a motion by Brett. Seconded by Darris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And I just mentioned that donations of 500 or greater are supported by school boards through their voting to accept that donation. So anything of $500 or greater needs to go through the school board. However, we also like to bring to the attention of the school board and community any donations we receive for any amount.
Okay, our next item is fan eighty.
We have no requests this month, but we anticipate one next month.
Item seven point eight would be to adopt the 2021-2022 annual budget.
So we just would need a motion and a second for that.
To adopt it. Motion by Darris. Seconded by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Our next item is seven point nine, the tax levy certification.
Yes, again, we will take a motion and a second to certify the 2021-22 tax levy of $3,678,161. The breakdown of the levy is as follows. General fund, $3,119,999. Referendum debt service of $466,845. Non-referendum debt service of $66,317. And the community service fund of $25,000.
Need a motion to prove that levy as presented. Motion by Darris. Seconded Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven point one oh, seven point ten, approval of the 2021 audited financial statements, which were delivered by Mr. Tim.
I so move.
Motion by Kevin. Seconded by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have a start college now request, seven point eleven.
Yes, the school board does approve these and can approve them anytime as long as they're submitted to the district office or to the high school office by October first. We have another student who would like to take credits, starting college now while in high school, and we do provide support for those classes.
See that in your packet?
I'll make that.
Okay, motion by Jeff. Seconded by Darris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, with that, we are all ready for the principals and directors' reports.
Great, Mr. Folsing, would you like to start a salad?
Sure. October's kind of a fun month at Stoddard. We have something called Pumpkin Tuesday. We bring in about 10 pumpkins every week and give them out to kids who are working hard and earning their shout-out cards for the week. And we're also doing Guess the Weight, so they have to guess a pumpkin every week and how many ounces it is. So it's just something a little fun for the kids and they seem to really enjoy it. Thanks to Lasting Legacy Cars for $500 for fishing equipment so that we can do a few more fishing trips coming up. PTO just donated new water bottles for everybody, so everybody's getting those this week. The Gaga pit is wore out already. Lots of Band-Aids on hands and knuckles, so it's been pretty, pretty fun to watch them play. So we might have to upgrade to a little turf underneath next year, we'll see. And we made 100 shout-outs as our PBIS reports. We're doing a little Halloween fun on Wednesday. And then the last two weeks, I've spent quite a few hours doing many observations for all the teachers as a jumpstart to observations this year. So it's been nice to get in the classroom and see all the good things that teachers are doing.
One question. Are you talking about playground equipment there?
Yeah.
And there? I have like some crushed rubber chips or rubber... If you guys would be interested in that.
Sweet. Think about it. I know PTO is getting the Gaga game too, so we'll think about it.
Just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Olson?
Sure. So as we said, mentioned, our Beyond Belt program started at Prairie View last week with about 25 to 30 participants. Our PTO sponsored an outdoor movie night a couple Saturday nights ago. It was a 70-degree evening, so it was perfect for the students and their families to enjoy an outdoor movie with popcorn and some glow-up things. We had our Halloween hoopla this afternoon at Prairie View where we have different stations set up. The kids, they change into their school, or their, excuse me, their Halloween costumes, have a little parade, and then they break out into different stations for the afternoon. So that was an enjoyable time. Switching gears to transportation, we had a safety meeting last week. And I'd like to thank Karen Wayne. She was our main presenter. She presented on CPI and how to minimize situations, what's the word I'm looking for?
De-escalate.
De-escalate situations, thank you. It was very well received. We had a lot of good conversation about different scenarios that bus drivers are presented with. And we worked on, talked about many different situations and ways to de-escalate them. And then, good news, we are pumping fuel out of the fuel barrel at DiSoto's. I thank many people involved here that took part in making that happen. That should be money savings for Southwest Bus and for our district.
Thank you.
Mrs. Moline?
Excellent, since the last school board meeting, we've had 20 IDP meetings. In addition, as part of my district assessment coordinator role this year, we've started signing up for tests, getting appropriate waivers and things like that for who's going to be releasing confidential information, including Mr. Granning and myself. So we're all ready to go with that. And underway with starting to enter data for the English as a Second Language Assessment, which is the first one off the docket. In addition, thank you to Mrs. Granning and the rest of my assessment procedural compliance team for special education, who helped to do the reading drives initiative, procedural compliance for the Department of Public Instruction. So far in our review, we've completed the records review, which was a full day-long process. So shout out to the staff that helped with that. And then the two-week window of services review, which Mrs. Granning and I just concluded. I will be entering our findings on the DPI website and be getting corrective action plans moving forward. A couple weeks ago, we had a site visit for the 4K program and early childhood from Kelly from CISA IV, who's visiting all CISA IV, early childhood, and programs throughout our region. So it was exciting to have her at Prairie View to discuss that program. And Tamara Zink for accompanying me in that discussion. A lot of good professional development ideas and discussing how other areas, school districts, can support those early learners as we offer two full-day-a-week program here. But of course, transportation, other concerns go alongside four half-day programs or other opportunities. So we'll continue to be looking at some of those testing programs that she discussed and other ideas. So that was a very nice of her to visit. We just completed the pupil non-discrimination report for the 2020-2021 school year. It's any complaints of discrimination, harassment of people, students, or staff in a protected class. In addition, we've done our registration for the civil rights data collection. The actual report itself isn't open yet, but that will be opening soon and closes in February. And that's a report every couple of years. So that will be a big undertaking that Mrs. Granning and I will have, entering that data over Christmas break. And definitely, last but not, well, actually, two more things. Last but not least, I didn't want to forget about that bus driver training. So thank you to Mr. Olson for bringing that up. It included medical situations, behavioral, and other ways to keep students safe. I just want to give a shout-out to all those bus drivers because and the whole transportation crew. It's really a great group to work with, a lot of fun, and great scenarios. Their participation was phenomenal so that it can make the training even more meaningful. Just want to remind everyone to please look for those flashing lights and that stop sign because it's really important as that's one of the biggest factors that was discussed in addition to obviously students being here, but keeping them safe all along that route is really important. Switching to the final gears of my report, I want to visit about that SIR funding and grants. I know that we'll give another update at next school board meeting on spending out SIR I, our continued expenditures and proposals and ideas on SIR II, which we had moving forward. And last but not least, SIR III. I know there's been a lot of anticipation in that. They are going to be releasing that soon for us to enter information, get local stakeholder feedback and engagement, as well as 20% of those funds need to be reserved for evidence-based intervention strategies. So again, all that will be taking place in November. And as a school district, we'll have 90 days in which we'll be able to submit our initial SIR III application. So we'll look forward to that at the next school board meeting and further discussion. The DiSoto School District also completed and submitted a response to the American Rescue Plan for helping homeless children and youth as part two grant. This is in response to COVID as well, to providing services in light of the challenges of the pandemic to students in need. And this type of funding will be able to be spent through September of 2024. Districts who receive less than $5,000 will be required to be part of a consortium either with another school district or with CISA. Based on the preliminary information that we've reported, we anticipate that we will be able to manage our own funds as a school district and be able to spend those, that funding out for 16 different activities that are eligible for spending. So we'll look forward to that.
I'd also like to extend shout-outs to you, Mrs. Moline, because you go through that crisis prevention intervention training, which takes several days of your time plus a lot of studying and a tremendously challenging test. And because of that, you are able to offer that training to our staff as well as those bus drivers. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Granning?
Okay, I am happy to report that our Chromebook grant was approved. 165 Chromebooks at a value of $64,262.55. So because that worked so well, they opened up a second window, so we thought we'd take another shot. We requested 75 iPads at a total of $22,425. So we'll see how that goes. Pretty excited that the Chromebook grant went through. Other than that, just your average day-to-day stuff.
Thank you.
Guy?
Just a couple things. We've been working on a lot of miscellaneous stuff. Football field has been put to sleep through the winter. The year they came down blew out the irrigation system last Friday. And lab 22, we've been kind of renovating that, getting ready for the door to be put in there. They are coming Thursday to start on that. They might prep the opening. Our door that is actually going in there has been on back order forever. It did not get delivered today. They don't know the actual delivery date, but they are going to prep the opening and maybe just cover it up for now till the door gets here, making everything safer when it gets in there so nobody gets hurt in the case.
And I know supplies are a challenge across every aspect, but making sure that we have that opening in that room is important as well as securing the office area with a properly fitting door. So I appreciate you keeping this on the top of your list. Okay, Betsy?
It's kind of been a crazy year so far. It's getting very difficult to get menu items. Some of those items are juice, individual juice cups, chicken items, pizza, lettuce items, lettuce, paper products.
Everything.
Just a few other things. Reinhardt is sending a lot of substitutions or nothing at all. So we're making a lot of menu changes. We try to alert families ahead of time, but sometimes we don't know ahead of time if there's going to be shortages. So that takes a lot of time transporting food between schools. So yeah, taking it day by day. They were fortunate to receive some local squash from Percale. It was squash peppers, tomatoes, onions, watermelon. We received a whole pallet of watermelon. I think he said the watermelons were $0.25 a piece. And I was paying close to $11 a watermelon this fall. So that was a big savings. And the kids really enjoyed the watermelon, so. And then Karma School Lessons will be starting at Prairie View soon and at Stoddard. Sheena Folsing with Blue Wise is the nutrition coordinator. And she is working with myself and Amy Rohl and a few of the other staff at Prairie View to get that started. And then our after-school program at DiSoto is averaging between 40 and 50 kids participating daily.
Thank you. And Betsy also sponsored a breakfast for our academic awards program. This is the second year we've done that. We'll be doing it, you know, once a semester to honor our students. They love Betsy's breakfast. She makes an egg bake and sausage and all the good stuff, muffins. And then they receive their academic awards and honors at that breakfast. So we really appreciate you doing that. And she'll also be sponsoring the lunch. We will be hosting in November the upcoming Ridge and Valley Leadership Conference with students from each of our conference schools, as we've done in previous years. And they all want to come here because it is the absolute best meal. We do chicken Kiev and better get on that chicken runway if chicken shortages are out there because otherwise we're going to have to come up with a new favorite for them. So we look forward to that. And I just thank Betsy for, very much for your making it so special for the kids.
Do you guys understand why that is happening going on? Is because the workers that are out in these processing plants, and they normally stand side by side. Yeah. So they've had to slow the chain speed down. So which means when they're butchering or processing that product, they're doing it and they throw it back on what they call the chain. But now all of a sudden, maybe they only have 50% capacity on workers on this, you know, working on these chains.
Thank you for that explanation.
I just read an article on that.
I will present the report for middle school, high school. Homecoming was after the September school board meeting. We have become volleyball conference champions. We acknowledge our middle school volleyball, football, cross-country programs. Cross-country just finished competing at sectionals, and I have a coach right here. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, we had just what every kid PR'd at sectionals, which was really, really neat. We set, broke the school record about five times this year. And we're going to try to break it five more times next year. We had two young men that made second-team all-conference on the, in the cross-country on the team. We have a tremendous group of young kids coming back that have worked so hard. And, you know, they started running in June and their accomplishments have been just amazing. And I think these kids, I really think they will be conference champions next year. You know, we'll be returning, I think, three freshmen, a junior, and I'm missing, we're losing two seniors, the one that we're bringing on, an eighth grader that he ran, he was only beat by four kids all year in two different races. And one was a 250-kid race in Decorah, another one was a 200, just about 50-kid race in Platteville. And he only looked at, you know, those are the only times he lost all year. So we're really excited about what we've got moving forward. But if you guys can help us pick up more kids, it's a great program and kids are treating each other well. And it's just, it's just a lot of fun. They're, it's amazing, isn't it, Betsy?
Yes, we loved it.
Yeah? Anyway.
Well, you've laid down the challenge for the team and every other conference team who just heard you say, "We're going to beat the champs."
Very good.
I guess they can follow our lead. Thank you for sharing that. Like all coaches, their programs are very important to them, and we appreciate that investment from all of our coaches. We're starting the winter sports season now for middle school basketball. That's underway. And in a few weeks, we'll pick up the high school teams again in wrestling and girls' and boys' basketball. Also, this last week, we had three very important events. We had Brad Hurtig, a speaker. He spoke to our middle school and high school student body about overcoming a physical accident that caused him both of his hands at Plant. And he talked about how he moved forward from that and demonstrated the use of his two hands that extend up to his elbows now. And that's $160,000 worth of prosthetics that he was wearing that's electronically operated. And he's can pretty much do everything now, from drive to eat to you name it. The one thing he can't do is push-ups. As that, he tried that and it broke his, it broke his new arm, so he had to get some replacements. But he did a very nice job and got some very positive feedback from students afterward who lingered a little longer. Unity Day was on Wednesday, which is an anti-bullying, bullying prevention, and kindness day nationwide. And then we, thanks to Mr. Pedretti and his work on the Wisconsin Rural School Board Association, we were selected as one of two school districts in the region to have the Menominee Tribe present a white pine tree and join us in a ceremonial planting of a peace tree here on our property. And so that was attended by middle school students. Some high school classes came down, and Mr. Pedretti was there. And I think it was a very good ceremony.
It was a really good ceremony.
The peace tree is out. The Gillespies were here. Tim and Marge were very generous in allowing us to plant the tree just behind the outdoor classroom, which is on their property as well, and took part in the ceremony. And as that tree grows to 140 feet, we hope that the growth in our young people as their students here helps them to develop a kinder heart, thoughtfulness, acceptance. And they grow as individuals as the tree grows in height. And I wish I would be here when it hits that 140-foot mark to see our students and our community gather around that tree from time to time and think about the overall purpose. And let's see, and our FFA program leaves for nationals, and they took part in what we call event testing. We received our CLI A waiver, which allows us to do the rapid antigen and the PCR testing here for our students, staff, families, even community members who are associated with our school as volunteers, coaches, or advisors. Mrs. Moline and Derek Folsing and Mr. Olson are now trained in how to help students, our families, enter that information, the preliminary entry of information, if you have symptoms or not. We have the waivers in place for adults and students to complete as well, allowing themselves to be tested here. And our students are going on the FFA trip, event-tested, which meant prior to leaving, they were tested on Friday. I'm glad to report that we didn't have any positives. And so they know going forward on that trip that they leave here with no positive COVID test results. Other school districts are also participating in what is called the ment staff. But we also have the potential of some students concerned or staff members concerned that we can do that on demand with the appropriate parent permission for those who are under 18. with the appropriate parent permission for those who are under 18. So it took a little longer than we hoped to get the waivers and the process. But now that we have all that in place, we are able to do that here. Now, we are also coordinating the booster shots for all of our district staff. You know, last March, we were able to provide the initial two vaccine vaccinations for COVID-19 here on school property at Stoddard Elementary. We are working with the DeSoto Lutheran Church. And this Thursday, we have a time spot between 1:00 and 3:00 for any of our employees or people associated with our district to go and get their booster shot at the church from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. So we are proud of the work we do to continue to provide opportunities for our staff to be safe, as well as our students. I think that's all of our reports. I didn't miss anybody? Nope.
Okay, then our next item would be correspondence.
Yes, we had a letter, two letters related to COVID-19 practices. And one of the, that came from community members. And a response was provided to them. The board members have seen those letters as well as my response. We received a thank you from Roger Mueller family in our expressions of sympathy. And we received an acknowledgement from the village clerk of Ferryville, sent to Mrs. Bark and the students that were down there for the cleanup day and their appreciation. As you know, during homecoming week, we took one day where all of our high school students were split throughout our communities and our district doing community service. And that's something that we will continue to try to do every homecoming week as a way of thanking our community for their support and giving back as well.
Thank you. Are there any items for the November 15th board meeting that anybody wishes to have on the agenda at the moment?
One of the items that we will put on as a regular item is the SIR funding to ensure that that is held in front of the community for informational purposes and potential feedback.
I guess with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. A motion by Ryan, seconded by Jess, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.